Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for November 7, 2022. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual negotiations and matters specific to the employment of a particular corporation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for November 7, 2022. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Michael Rizzo and Isabella Rios and then remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother-in-law of Anna Siminski? Thank you, everybody. It looks like we have good news tonight with the middle school, Dr. Hatter?
We sure do. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I apologize that we were a few minutes late coming out of our meeting prior to this. It is so wonderful to see students from our middle school, students from Ms. Fazio's class. A few years ago, we started a public speaking course here in the middle school. It's so important to build those skills, even at this early age in the middle school, of public speaking, being comfortable in front of large audiences and large groups of people. Our students are going to talk about some of the projects that they have designed on their own. These are topics that they're writing about that are meaningful to them. They are based on our work in ESTEAM, the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and our students will share their essays that they have drafted. And I just want you to keep in mind, and I share this with the board as well and with our community, this is a public speaking course, and the way that Ms. Fazio has been able to integrate our work in ESTEAM and the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals with the humanities, with public speaking, is just absolutely remarkable. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to middle school principal Mrs. Horowitz to introduce this evening's good news.
Dr. Hatter, Ms. Carbone, members of the Board of Trustees and the Central Administration, thank you for the opportunity to present our good news tonight. MESMS had a great start to the year, presentations by our kickoff speaker, Kevin Wanzner, as well as seventh grade presentation by author Shelley Pierceall focused on promoting empathy and kindness. MESMS has partnered with the American Heart Association for presentations regarding physical and mental health. Through them, our students participated in the NFL Play 60 program that teaches about importance of physical activity, mental well-being, and nutrition. They got to meet with a Giants player. They were very excited. And also, the American Heart Association presented on the risks of vaping. We will continue to partnership with them throughout the coming year. One of our goals for the year is to redefine and refocus our Eagles' values, which are now empathy, acceptance, gratitude, leadership, endurance, and service. For the month of November, we are highlighting the value of gratitude by sharing student and staff expressions of gratitude, as well as contributing to collections to those in need. We would like to express our gratitude to the Board of Ed and Central Administration by presenting you with a small token of appreciation for your support throughout the year. The token just reads, "Appreciation is of importance. Granted, we need to be grateful to all around us since no man is an island in the world. Thus, let us express our appreciation and narrow the distance between each other with this special token. Be faithful to be true to your feelings. Be thankful for the people around you." And we're truly thankful here at MESMS for Central Admin and for our board. At this time, I invite Ms. Fazio and her great students to perform their presentation.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and thank you to the board for inviting my group here. I am so proud to introduce my class. This is the Public Speaking Core class that I have for one quarter of the year, and I'll have four different groups throughout the year. As Dr. Hatter had said, that this particular group, they learn lots of different things. I show them different techniques and skills, which the children will talk to you about, but in the end, they all produce a wonderful essay that they then have to speak to an audience, and we invite their peers, their friends, and teachers to come in and listen. And they are focused, different topics, specific topics that are related and encompass ESTEAM, most especially empathy, and it came from what they thought was most important. I taught them how they really should take a look at what's passionate to them, because passionate speakers really get out there and speak to an audience truthfully. So their final product is a written speech that is done, and so now the children are going to talk a little bit about all the different things that they learned in the class before they actually began all the research on the United Nations Sustainability Goal website to gather up facts and information, and then to create their speeches. So, to begin.
In our class, we used to learn, we learned to use our voices properly. This meant learning to project our voices, enunciate, speak clearly and slowly, to exercise your breathing techniques by using our diaphragm muscles.
One of the important things we learned is to know your audience.
We also learned to tell a story and to entertain an audience.
In addition to knowing our audience, we learned to make a strong argument or point. We did this by creating real debates.
We also learned to be confident and relaxed when presenting. We practice this through breathing exercises and yoga techniques.
As one of our motivators and role models, we learned good attributes of excellent speeches such as Moala, Dr. Martin Luther King, President John F. Kennedy, and U.S. Navy Admiral William McRaven.
One last thing, besides a good speech, we learned to accept and give criticism and advice towards each other. It helped us grow confident and to be proud of what we were sharing. Now, for a chance to hear some of our speeches, we have the following students sharing a paragraph or two. Thank you, advance, for your attention for our hard work.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Sinamenco, and I'm here to talk about Sustainable Development Goal One, No Poverty. One thing...
You're a little taller. You're almost as tall as I am.
One thing, one-third of the people living in poverty in developing countries are children ages zero to twelve. Nearly 22 children die each day due to living in extreme poverty. These children aren't able to live a normal life. They aren't able to do things like go to school and live in a house. Living in extreme poverty means you don't have access to everyday items like electricity. A quarter of humanity, about 1.6 billion people, live without electricity. Three billion people don't have access to clean fuels for cooking. This ends up coming as a high cost of indoor air pollution. Nearly 2.8 billion people rely on copper and animal dung for cooking and heating their homes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isabella Razuti, and my speech is about inflation. I will be informing you how and what inflation can cause. Can war actually affect inflation? Of course it can, and here is how. The war between Ukraine and Russia is also making inflation worse. We are supplying Ukraine with a lot of materials like coal, machinery, vehicles, agricultural products, fish and seafood, and aircraft. We do this to help Ukraine win the war and fight back with the correct materials. Ukraine is not a part of NATO. NATO is a system that includes about 26 countries that help protect each other, but since Ukraine is not a part of NATO, the U.S. has to supply them with materials to fend for themselves. Though Russia isn't a part of NATO either, the country is so big and has so many people it protects itself and doesn't need any other countries. We all need a good education to learn and figure out new things. You may ask, how does inflation affect schools? Well, the schools buy hundreds of workbooks, pencils, colored pencils, desks, books, smart boards, Chromebooks, tissues, and many more things just for the students to get a good education. Inflation can and will affect these schools. The prices on educational needs are already very expensive, and they don't need to get even more expensive. These schools and teachers pay so much money just for us kids to get a good education. These teachers also work really hard to teach their students, and they don't need any more on their plate. This is how and why inflation can affect us and places. Thank you for paying attention to my speech.
Hello, my name is Cara Rupke. UN Sustainable Goal 16 has 10 overall targets, letting you know exactly what the ultimate goals are. The first, and in my opinion, the most important target, is Target Two, Ending Abuse Against Children. Around the world, roughly three and four children are regularly subjected to violence issued by their parents. One in 10 children are sexually abused before the age of 18, and every seven minutes, a child is killed by violence. This needs to stop. Children's rights are just as important as anyone's, even if we are younger. One in four children are never officially given a birth certificate, taking away their access to social service and justice. These kids don't have access to equal opportunities, participation in decision-making, and necessity is crucial to survival. You can help by engaging online and spreading the information wherever you can. Thank you for listening, and I hope everyone has a great night.
Good evening. Did you know that today, because of climate change, the unnecessary heat and energy warms the ocean, the change in temperatures leads to imbalance effects, including ice melting, sea level rise, marine heat waves, and ocean acidification? Did you know that because of this, so many animals die, starve, or lose their homes? Thousands of marine mammals are killed each year after eating plastic or getting entangled in it. More than 25,000 species are in danger of disappearing. Climate change will be responsible for 8% of these. How does climate change affect our environment and the land? Well, because of climate change, more frequent and intense drought, storms, heat waves, rising sea levels, melting glaciers, and warming oceans can directly harm animals and destroy the places they live. As climate change worsens, more dangerous weather events are becoming more frequent and severe.
Hi, my name is Max, and right now I will be talking about why all kids should get quality education and what COVID has done to kids' education. By 2030, the UN ensures that all learners acquire the knowledge and skills needed to promote sustainable development, including, among others, through education for sustainable development and sustainable lifestyles, human rights, gender equality, promotion of a culture in peace and nonviolence, and global citizenship.
Hello, my name is Mohammed, and I am here today to talk about climate change. Did you know that 24,000 tons of ice melts each second? That's 10 Olympic swimming pools of ice that are melting every second. Additionally, each year, the sea levels rise by 0.17 inches. The amount of Arctic animals globally has also decreased by 10% in the last 30 years. We need to stop producing this many greenhouse gases in the air. Also, greenhouse gases stay in the atmosphere for 300 to 1,000 years before they go away. We produce a lot of carbon dioxide. A large portion of this is being dissolved into the ocean. These gases also get trapped in the atmosphere. Not only are we harming life on land, we are also harming life underwater. When gases are in the atmosphere, it traps the sun heat. This is known as the greenhouse effect. A little greenhouse effect is good, but with the amount of pollution there is in the air, the effect is multiplying and heating up the earth quickly.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessa, and today I'm going to be talking about goal number five, gender equality. Did you know that if we make gender equality prosper, then it could boost economic growth? But we can also not do this if 15 million girls a year are not getting an education. 15 million girls around the globe are being denied education. But if all girls start getting an education, then they are less likely to be in arranged marriages and can live more healthy and productive lives. We need to help women be respected and treated with equality everywhere. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you. And we invite the board members to also listen to some of the other speeches here. I know that you're trying to move along with some other presentations, but they too wanted to personally tell you some of their speeches, so.
So we would love to hear from the students who are here in the audience. I believe that there are six. I thought there were seven.
There are seven, right? There's one more that's not here.
Okay, all right. So there are six here tonight, but seven were scheduled. We would love to hear, and what we can do is, is it okay that we have the students approach? And we can either go to the other side of the table here, or we can remain on this side of the table, but we'd love to hear your public speaking now in a small group setting. So that would be absolutely wonderful. So, boys and girls, you're welcome to walk to the... And then, board members, you can either stay where you are, or you can go around, whatever you prefer.
We'd like to thank the board so much once again for inviting our wonderful students. It was amazing to hear their speeches and the research that they did. I'm so proud of you. Ms. Fazio is proud of you, and I'm sure our board is very proud of you, as well as your parents. If your parents could please give your wonderful students. Thank you once again for giving us the opportunity.
So, students up front, you may return to your seats in the front row. I just want to take a moment to, first of all, tell our students how proud of you I am. I asked each one of you, how did you come up with your topic? And it was something that I think universally was responded to by saying, "I felt strongly about this," or "I wanted to learn more about this." And I said, "Okay, good for you. Good for you. You were passionate about what you selected, and I'm proud of you for that." From the technical standpoint, in terms of the public speaking, I am so proud of, first of all, how comfortable those who presented at the podium were. I will tell you that I believe that's the biggest fear that adults have, is public speaking. And you all are middle school students and doing it so well. For the students who have the small group presentations, you were remarkable. You were absolutely remarkable. Your eye contact was amazing. Your posture, your pride in the topic you were presenting was absolutely amazing, and I am just so proud, not only that you found a topic that you'd like to research, and that's all terrific, but for this public speaking course to be comfortable and to be confident in speaking with adults. And this is something you'll learn when you get older, that not everyone is comfortable speaking in front of a large crowd, and you did this so, so well, and you did this as middle school students. I am so proud of you. Keep up the great work, and I'm interested in hearing maybe some of those debates. I have come to visit some of the debates in the past in Ms. Fazio's class, and hopefully I'll have the opportunity to return later on this school year. But, boys and girls, well done. I'm very proud of you. And, parents, thank you. Thank you for your support. And so, thank you. We appreciate all the support that you provide to us as a school district. We know that you're their first teachers. You're their best teachers, and we appreciate that, and we respect that, and we thank you for entrusting their education to us. And you send us fine children. I don't know what they're like at home, but what I'll tell you is, they're wonderful here, and they're so terrific in school, and so eager to learn and receptive to the learning. So I will tell you that. As many of you know, I send my seventh grade daughter here to school as well, and she's enjoying the experience here at String Middle School, and I trust that your children are enjoying the same. And I just thank you for your support, for sending us great children. They're just so wonderful to work with, and I think I speak for the entire faculty here at the middle school and in our district. Thank you for everything that you all do to help advance the learning of your children. That's why we're here. Ms. Carbone, I'll refer to you.
I just want to tell the students, they were amazing. I mean, to listen to you, and you spoke so clearly and so passionately. It's not something adults, I don't like to do it. So I just thank you for being able to do it. You were amazing. You really were. Mrs. Fazio, thank you so much. Ms. Horowitz and your staff, you're all wonderful. So thank you all for everything you do for the students. Parents, you have great kids. Thank you.
So we're going, we recognize it's 7:30, but, boys and girls, for bedtime sake, it's really like 8:30. So don't give your parents a hard time when you go home and they say, "Okay, wrap it up soon. Time for bed." We have other items. We'll be discussing the three through eight math and ELA scores and region scores. I usually don't present on test scores because that's one metric that is what it is. It's one metric. This is how I gauge our success. We did really well, so you'll hear all the news stories that there have been historical declines in math and reading. We're going to prove that wrong in about five minutes, but what we're going to do is take a five-minute recess. So for anybody who wants to depart for the evening, you're welcome to do that. Boys and girls, if you have homework, make sure you do your homework tonight before tomorrow. So we'll take a brief recess. For anybody who wishes to exit, please do so. If you wish to stick around for the presentation, you're welcome to do that as well. But either way, have a great evening.
I just have to ask you that. Did anybody sign up for first public comment?
No.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
I am just going to make my way over to the podium for the presentation on the three through eight Regents Assessment Results from 2022. Good evening. There have been several reports in the news media with regard to the assessment results post-pandemic. So, coming out of COVID, the 2022 exams were the first set of exams that were given en masse to students across New York State. There have been so many media reports with regard to the results of those assessments and the declines that school districts across the state and country have experienced. We generally do not present the scores because they are one metric of so many metrics that we use. Also, refusal rates don't really reflect the full population. However, in the transparency that we provide to our community, we wanted to share how the results look, how the assessments demonstrated student progress in math and ELA across grades three through eight and in Regents exam subjects. So this evening, Mrs. Amerling, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will be presenting, along with Ms. Pamela Chesser, our Supervisor of English, of Humanities, English Language Arts, and Social Studies. English Language Arts and Social Studies, and Chris Miller, our Supervisor of STEM. So I will now turn over the presentation to Mrs. Amerling.
Thank you, Dr. Hutter. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to report on our assessment results. As Dr. Hutter shared, we did see some of the headlines in the media last month after the nation's report card was released, really reflecting on grades four and eight proficiency rates in reading and math. Yvette, are you advancing, or am I? Help? You advanced it, okay, thank you. We can see some of these headlines do show the pandemic learning loss. They are quite alarming. I know that they can be frightening for our parents to know where does their child stand. We see locally in some of the articles in the next slide, from News 12, where the data shows that math and reading test scores have plunged. In a New York Times headline, "It's the Pandemic Erased Two Decades of Progress in Math and Reading." To be transparent, we do want to share with our community what our Yorktown students really look like and how they have fared throughout the pandemic. On the next slide, we take a look at our grade four proficiency rates. On the left side, we can see United States results for grade four in reading and math, where approximately a third of the students are proficient. That carries through fairly closely to the New York State level, slightly lower across New York State in terms of proficiency for reading and math. But in the next slide, when we add to that graph Yorktown's numbers, we see a dramatic increase. Those numbers do not reflect our students. Our students in grade four in ELA are double that of New York State, and certainly more than double that in the area of mathematics. In the next slide, we begin to look at our grade eight numbers. We see across the U.S., as well in New York State, the proficiency levels in ELA are about one-third of students meeting proficiency. That number is just slightly lower in mathematics, both across the states as well as in New York. In the next slide, when we add Yorktown scores, we see that our students are dramatically above the state and the United States in both ELA and in math. We wanted to take a look at all of our students in grades three through eight. And on the next slide, thank you, Yvette. On the next slide, if we put all of our students into a blender, and we mix them up, and we just wanted to see what do all of our grade three-through-eight students look like, we would see about half of the students in New York State are meeting proficiency levels in ELA. That number is a little higher in Westchester County. Below that, when we look at the results in mathematics for all of the students combined in grades three through eight, we see that it's 39%. It's more than a third of the students in the state are proficient in mathematics, and that number rises for Westchester County to about half. Again, when we add, on the next slide, when we add Yorktown's results in there, we see a dramatic increase above, certainly, New York State in both areas, ELA and math, and a significant increase above Westchester's proficiency rates in ELA and math for grades three through eight. We're going to begin to look at our ELA data a little bit further. And for that, I will invite up Ms. Chesser. And following that, Mr. Miller will look at the results for both math and science.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present some of this data to you. On the next slide, what you'll see is, this is a breakdown of all of the grades for the ELA proficiency. We've included for you a comparative of 2016 and 2019, so that you can actually see the historical context that 2022 fits into. We chose 2019 because that was the last test prior to 2022. It was pre-pandemic. And then 2016, between 2016 and 2019, is the same amount of space between 2019 and 2022. So as you go down the list of the grade levels, what you'll notice is that our proficiency rate is similar between 2019 and 2022. And even in some grades, we've increased our proficiency in 2022. On the next slide, what you'll see is our overall grade three-through-eight data in ELA for proficiency. Again, we've included that 2016 and 2019 comparative for historical context. On the bottom, those levels one through four indicate the percentage that our Yorktown students achieved at each level. In order to get that proficiency, we look at the levels three and four. So overall, we were able to decrease the number of students performing at level one in 2022, and we were able to increase the number of students performing at levels three and four in 2022. So overall, when we look at our data historically, you can see that any decline that is being mentioned in the news is not applicable to the Yorktown ELA in 2022. Now I'd like to introduce Mr. Miller. He'll talk about math and science.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, thank you for giving this opportunity to speak about this data points. And we will continue the presentation with math and science. Or we're going to have a delay. There we go. So first, we have up there the 2022 mathematics scores, and we have it broken down by grade level. And as Ms. Chesser said, we added in 2019 and 2016 as well to talk about pre-pandemic and even just a historical year. And when you read these numbers going across, you will see that we were similar to our prior years before the pandemic and historically given. When we go a little higher up into our secondary levels, we start talking about Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II Regents exams, once again using 2022 proficiency rates, comparing them to years in the past. Once again, we'll see passing rates, master rates are all roughly similar throughout the years. The final math slide, once again, puts them all together. So all the students in grades three through eight, if we put them all together and try to compare ourselves to us, in 2022, as you can see, comparable to 2019, right before the pandemic, we are really, really close. We are right there. And actually, that little gap that you do see is actually smaller because of rounding. So it's not even that full gap that you do see there. So when you saw those headlines that Mrs. Amerling discussed about plunged, our data does not show any such plunge for our students in mathematics. And actually, if you even go back to 2016, our students left last school year in a better place than they did it back in 2016 mathematically. So we really did show some nice trajectory right there. Our final slide for me is science. And though it doesn't get the same press and publicity as math and ELA nationally and within the state, we still have assessments in New York for grades four, eight, and then the high school. So we have all the data there for us as well. And you can see in grade four, we still performed at an excellent level. In grade eight, we did notice a dip in our 2022 results. But when we look at our secondary results in Earth Science, Living Environment, Chemistry, and Physics, once again, we notice that our number of students taking these assessments, the passing rates of these assessments, and the mastery of all these assessments is still just like they were back in 2019 and even back in 2016. So to finish up this presentation, I'll call up Mrs. Amerling to just wrap it up.
Thank you. So putting it all together, what does this really mean for us and for our work? We're continually looking at many, many different multiple measures of our student progress. We look at them to inform what we do, our curriculum. We use it to inform our approach to instruction and how we teach our students. We're constantly looking at how we need to support our students, whether it be with additional programs in reading, math, or the content areas. We're very proud of the work on behalf of our administrators, department leaders, our grade-level teachers. So much goes into the work that happens to really support our students in all ways. Looking at data is just one way that we keep that going. It is never a stagnant process. We're always looking, and we're always trying to improve for our students. The final slide, I think, is one that you have seen many, many times before. I really do love the image that is at the center there, where we see our students minds-on, hands-on, collaborating, problem-solving, working together. We know that this approach is really the whole-child approach that we so strongly believe in for all of our Yorktown students. As evident tonight, even in the types of courses that we give to some of our youngest, to our sixth-grade middle school students, it is just a phenomenal product that we're looking for as an outcome for all of our Yorktown students. That whole-child approach is really looking to build that strong foundation for their future success. And I just believe that there is no one data point that can truly capture all of what goes into really producing a very well-rounded student ready for the jobs and the programs of tomorrow. So we thank you for listening to this. We hope that you see that despite the pandemic, that we really are making strides and that we continue to. We will always continue to reflect and work hard for the benefit of our students, whether that's through data or just looking for really great programs that will just make them ready for the future. I would invite Pam and Chris back up. And just if you have any questions or comments that you would like to make that we can address, we'd be happy to.
I just want to take a moment to, before we open it up to questions from the board, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Mrs. Amerling and Ms. Chesser and Mr. Miller for their work in leading their respective areas. Also, thanks to our teachers. This doesn't happen in isolation. Our teachers worked really, really hard throughout the pandemic to meet student needs. Now, while the scores show a modest increase in some areas, modest decreases in other areas, I can look, and we've picked apart this data. I can tell you just about everything you need to know about these data points. There are increases, there are decreases, there are refusal rates that we have to be mindful of. Also, when we look at Regents exam scores, the cut score from one year to the next to achieve proficiency. For example, the 2016 passing score was easier to attain in the English regions than it was in 2022. The mastery score in 2016 was at a lower threshold than the mastery score in 2022. So as we look at our data, we always take them with a grain of salt. We have not seen the decline that has been widely publicized in the news media. We included 2016, I wanted to share this for context. By many accounts, 2019 produced some of the highest New York State assessment results, whether it's a Regents exam, ELA, or math, since these data were recorded. So we wanted another year prior to the pandemic. So we just chose three-year increments because 2022, the first mass administration coming out of the pandemic, 2019, the first, the last mass administration going into the pandemic, was a three-year gap. So we just chose another three-year gap prior to provide additional context for the results. With regard to what counts and what's most important, it's everything together. I look at these scores, and I just see one tile in a beautiful mosaic of our district. So do we want to improve? Of course we want to improve. We'll never settle for this. We want to continuously get better, and that's our goal. And Chris, Pam, and Deirdre do that every day. And our teachers do that every day, and our students do that every day. But it's one snapshot in time. We focus on the whole child, the public speaking opportunities that our middle schoolers have, the service activities, the athletic activities, the performing arts that we so value here in Yorktown, all of the co-curricular opportunities for our students, all go into the Yorktown experience and the Yorktown approach to teaching and learning. And we thank the board for supporting all of those endeavors. There are a lot of competing priorities, especially when it comes to budget time, yet you so skillfully and thoroughly navigate the process to ensure that our students have so many opportunities before them during their 13-year journey here in Yorktown. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank our parents in the community during the time where schools were closed for remote instruction or the hybrid model of instruction. We had just such great community support, such great parental support. Our students are extraordinary, they're just second to none. And I believe these results are just one reflection of how the school community came together around a really difficult time in our history. So my thank you to Mrs. Amerling, to Ms. Chesser, Mr. Miller, teachers, administrators in the buildings, parents, students, and certainly to our board.
Thank you. Thank you for this information. It was extremely helpful, given all the national press we keep hearing. Any questions over here?
First, I have a couple of questions. Well, before I ask the question, I have to agree with you, Dr. Hutter, that it's definitely our staff and our administration that brings the kids to this level. But during COVID, it really was the parents. You know, I mean, I learned a lot about European history and biology, more than I ever wanted to know during COVID, because I could hear the lessons, and then my daughter and I would talk about it. So it really was the parents that helped carry us through that. So thank you for that. I did make an observation, and it's on Slide 11. It was 11, yeah. So it appeared to me that across the years, 2016, 2019, 2022, grade three was a much higher level, and it decreased pretty steadily as it got to grade eight. Do we know why that is, and what are we doing to address that?
Sure. So what we do in order to take a look at some of that is, we actually, we start by looking at the proficiency rate, but then we actually do an item analysis of every question. In ELA, our skills spiral. So, and they just become more increasingly complex. So from third grade all the way to, sorry, from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, although you may have something such as character in kindergarten, students will still be learning about character all the way through 12th grade. So as we go through that item analysis, looking at the vocabulary, the skill that's in each question, we then take a look at where we need to include that and spiral it into our curriculum. And so, you know, in terms of it becoming more complex, those are some of those pieces that we continue to look at. We look at with teachers, and they start to build that through the anchor text that they do in the class and as we spiral those skills through the curriculum.
Thank you. Sure?
This was a wonderful presentation. This data really is very hopeful for us. So thank you for putting this together. And I guess piggybacking a little bit off of Lisa's question, what are our next steps? How does this data position us and launch us into what's next for us?
The next steps are continuous in this process. Pam and Chris, they have already begun to meet with the grade-level departments, with the teams in each of the buildings, to really pull apart, to do those item analysis, to really help us inform where we need to do the work. We know that there's work to do, we acknowledge that. I think it's part, even before the pandemic, this was part of the cycle of work that we're always doing. So it's not easy, it doesn't end, it is continuous. And we look at multiple measures all throughout the year. We do benchmark assessments three times a year for all of our students. Our teachers are continuously gaining information about the students to inform either support that individual students or groups of students need, as well as to inform our curriculum. So it's just a continuous cycle of work. It doesn't end, it's a long journey, it's exciting work, we really do enjoy it. Our teachers are fabulous, so it's just part of our everyday. And I do just want to acknowledge that our parents throughout the pandemic, even from the five-year-olds that needed a parent next to them continuously, all the way up to our 12th graders and trying to keep them motivated. You are correct that it's just a true credit to parents, as well as everybody as a community, that has us where we are right now. And we're looking forward to continuing the work.
And I'll just add to that, and that, I'll echo everything that Ms. Amerling shared. I'll just add, for me, it comes down to three things, three words, curriculum, instruction, and support. So do we need to make modifications to what we teach? That's curriculum. Do we need to make modifications to instruction, how we teach? And do we need to make modifications with student support? How we help students to learn the material? the material? So the curriculum is the what, and that shows up on slide 18. Curriculum's the what, instructions the how, and student support's how we facilitate the learning. And those are the three things that I think the assessments and so many other local assessments that we deliver will help inform.
Mike?
No, I'm fine. Most of my questions have already been answered. Thank you.
Pete? All right. I just, I, so this is one snapshot. It's one snapshot in time. What are the real data points that we look at to know that we're successful in this district?
I'll start, and then the content specialists can certainly join in. I don't think there's one data, I don't think there there would be a singular data point that we look at.
What are the outcomes?
To inform the whole perspective. So I think some of the things that we're looking at, certainly the test results, and we're looking at the item analysis aligned to the standards and saying, gee, if 79% of a grade level answered a question on place value incorrect, I'd want to see that question, and I'd want to look at our curriculum to make sure that that's being addressed. That informs the what part of the process. But we're looking at local assessments. We're hearing children read to us. We're looking at star benchmark assessments, module tests on in mathematics after each unit of study. We're looking at children's writing and seeing the growth that children have made in writing. What I'll share with you, and Mrs. Chesser shared this with me earlier, I'm sorry, last week, was something remarkable. This was a student who began writing with us, and I'm just going to hold it back. This was the extent of the writing at the beginning of the school year. And now, as we look forward, a month later, or a month and a half later, look at the stamina, the sentence structure is remarkable, the voice in this child's writing is remarkable. This won't, this growth and progress won't necessarily be measured on these state assessments, but it's something that we use as as a part of our process for continual growth. So what data, what do we look at? We look at so many things. We have data teams in all of our schools that look at the various data points that we can take away from local and state assessments, and that helps to inform us. But I'll defer to the content area specialists if there's anything that they want to add.
The one thing I did want to add, we hadn't talked too much about, is that we not only look at things that we need to improve on, we actually also look at things that we're doing well on. Because if we're doing well, we want to make sure we keep doing it. So we identify what we're doing well, and then where in our curriculum we are doing it well, so that we can continue to build on that and bring students even further. So that part hadn't been mentioned yet. I just wanted to make sure I did.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, we had sixth graders come, and they just spoke to us extremely eloquently, but they also wrote all that information. And so that, to me, is a data point that we know we're doing something right. I mean, that just didn't happen in a vacuum. So I just appreciate everything. You guys are all good? I appreciate all the information. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ron, did you have anything else?
There were just a few updates that I wanted to provide to our community. Congratulations to our boys varsity soccer team. They lost a heartbreaking game in their regional competition this past weekend. Congratulations to our cross-country team. They participated in sectionals this past weekend. We had some of our youth football teams participate in their closeouts, and the youth cheerleading groups participated in their final events. So the fall athletic season has come to a close officially today. The fall season came to a close with postseason play for Yorktown anyway. We look forward to the spring season, I'm sorry, the winter season. We don't look forward to the spring season yet, but the winter season begins one week from today, and we encourage students who have not yet registered to do so this week so it doesn't delay the start to their season. We have our fall comedy coming up with our drama club. More information on our website. I hear that Into the Woods is going to be the spring performance, and that's really exciting for our school district, one of the favorites in the Hatter household, anyway. And the first marking period, the first academic marking period comes to a close this Thursday. As a reminder, this will be posted to our website after tomorrow morning, but schools are closed tomorrow, K-5 for parent-teacher conferences. Grade six through 12 have a regular day of instruction tomorrow. Schools are closed in observance of Veterans Day on Friday, November 11th, and then certainly the Thanksgiving recess, schools will be closed. Wednesday would be a half-day. Thursday, Thanksgiving, we're closed, and Friday as well, and we reopen the following Monday. But other than that, we're looking forward to beginning the second quarter of the academic year, and I just can't believe we're already at this point. It feels like we just welcomed students back to our campuses.
We did. It just goes too fast. All right, thank you very much. We're going to board action items. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District hereby casts their vote in favor of Cheryl Brady to serve on the New York State School Board Association's Board of Directors representing Area 10 for a two-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2024, and authorizes the district clerk to execute any documents consistent with this motion.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy adoption. The board will conduct a second reading and adoption on the following policies and regulations. We have 6670 petty cash accounts, 6741 contracting for professional services, 6750 vendor relations, 6800 payroll procedures, 6800 R. payroll procedures regulation, 6830 expense reimbursement, 6830 R. expense reimbursement regulation, 6840 food purchases for district meetings and functions, and 6900 disposal of district properties. Is everybody okay with these policies? Effective November 3rd, 2022 through January 5th, 2023, and stipends for employees 4760 will terminate effective November 3rd, 2022.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel upon recommendation of the superintendent. A motion that the following be approved. Certified personnel, we have appointments. Other compensation, extra duty, co-curriculars at the middle school, co-curriculars at the high school. Addition to the substitute list, as teaching assistant change in hours, we have coaches for 22, 23-year, and we have volunteers, unpaid leave of absence, resignation for the purpose of retirement. Under classified personnel, we have additions to the substitute list.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office. I motion to accept the audit report made by the internal auditors and the district's corrective action plan for the intensive review of employee benefits.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby awards a contract for boiler heating maintenance for the prices specified to Thermodynamics Corporation as the lowest responsible bidder?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby awards the contract for boiler tube replacement for one boiler only at a cost of $74,700 to Thermodynamics Corporation as the lower responsible bidder?
Some move.
Discussion, this is the high school boiler we talked about? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the agreement with Dr. Andrew P. Levin as a consultant physician for the 2223 school year pending receipt of required insurance documents?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorizes the board president to sign a hold harmless agreement with the Fresh Air Fund Sharp Reservation for the Brookside Grade Three Student Trips from March 22nd and 23rd.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I motion to accept the following change order from Grace Contracting for the September, uh, summer 2022 district-wide improvement program?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I motion to approve an increase to the 2223 budget by $4,792 for insurance proceeds received to cover expenditures related to damage caused to the turf field bleachers.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special education, a motion to arrange the following placements as of November 7th, 2022?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the attached amendments to the following vendor agreements for the 2223 school year. This is for Tamara Neiman.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at Brookside, $1,650 in the Brookside PTA for the second-grade field trip to Yorktown Stage, and at Mohansick, $1,400 in the Mohansick PTA for the Star Lab Planetarium School Assembly. Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're up to board comments. Pete?
Just there was so nice to see the children from the middle school. The good news is always great news. Looking forward to more of that during school year.
Mike?
No, I echo Pete's sentiments. It's always nice when we have the children visit us, and I get to see what they do on a daily basis and the the growth when we go through the years. It's always nice.
Cheryl? I think we had a wonderful night with the middle school students. They did a wonderful job of presenting, and I'm just so happy to see it part of our curriculum. So that's really nice. I don't, and how long have we been offering that? Is that, is this the first?
No, I believe it's three or four years old at this point.
Wonderful. Great. Yeah, great job. Very impressive. Lisa?
Yes, I'll just echo everything everybody else said. Those kids were amazing. They're better than a lot of the lawyers I see in court. They are really, I mean, I'm just, that's a subject that's near and dear to my heart. I think everyone should be able to speak in public. It's so important. And to see that we're offering that, I had no idea we were offering that, to see that we're offering that and how well they're doing, I'm just so impressed. So thank you. Hats off to all of you.
Yeah, I echo everything. It's good news is really great news, and I'm so happy that it's back. I'm glad that we had presentations on our curriculum again, and so we're really post-COVID and coming back. So I'm grateful for it all, so thank you very much. Ron, Deirdre, Lisa, anything? And public comment number two?
None.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all.